We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Excuse me. We can hear someone talking in the background if that's whoever that is, if that could be muted? All right, thank you. Okay, we're, I would like to begin with an announcement from Chief Dearborn. He's on remote participation. Chief?
Good evening, everybody. As all of you know, our community is faced with unprecedented crisis. COVID-19 virus and the type of actions the pandemic spread is impacting all of our lives. Several weeks ago, the town and school district initiated a COVID-19 task force. This task force engaged in planning and preparation for what we are experiencing today. Many of the plans they are currently initiating were developed by this team. The situation changes rapidly. We are challenged to keep up with these changes. However, currently we are maintaining critical town services. Public safety is currently well-equipped and trained to take on this crisis. The following measures are in place. Schools are closed, the library is closed, outdoor and aging is closed, however essential services such as social services and public health there are accessible by appointment. Meals on Wheels is operating, the food pantry is open by appointment. Town offices are not open to the public. Please check longmeadow.org for a guide on how to engage in town services. All operations of the recycling center and transfer station are currently closed. Several actions, several actions have been put in place to protect the public. Social distancing has been established to slow the spread of this virus. This has resulted in additional changes including the closure of bars, restaurants, with the exception of takeout orders. Social distancing is our primary defense to slow the spread of this virus. I would ask all residents to take this seriously and do your part. I fully understand that there is a great level of concern by our residents. I share your concerns. This is new territory for all of us. I ask that all of us take care of each other and look out for our neighbors while maintaining social distancing. If you have a neighbor who may need some assistance, give them a call. Some may need just to talk, or some others may need something picked up at the store. Do what we can to support each other. We will weather the storm as a strong community. We are posting information daily on longmeadow.org, social media, and if you're not signed in for the town's emergency messaging system, please do so at longmeadow.org. I'll take any questions.
Richard, do you have any questions for the chief? Now, Mark Gold, do you have any questions?
No.
Tom?
No, I don't.
Mark Strange?
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much, chief, for you appreciate you calling in.
Okay, thank you.
And all the work that you and the task force have been doing. Lynn, do you want to talk to us about remote participation?
Sure. So tonight, you will see if you're watching, or those of you that are called in, we are utilizing remote participation under the governor's change to the open meeting law. He has suspended some of the requirements of remote participation. The quorum is not required physically in person anymore. The meeting can be done remotely via conference phone. We're utilizing LCTV to be able to broadcast it, but that's not a requirement. It's just a nice feature that we were able to do. And we have, I think, was it four select board members on the call right now? And one, one in person here? So we have a full, full quorum under the new guidelines that the governor has declared as of last week. So earlier, this made it onto your agenda because I thought that a change to the remote participation may be necessary based on your adoption of it back in July of 2019. You had done it for emergency purposes only. So tonight I had expected that you may need to amend that to strike the word emergency, but then a lot has transpired since then, and I think we could all say that we are kind of in an emergency at this point. And then the governor made changes to the open meeting law regarding remote participation. So I don't actually think that you need any modification to that vote in July right now, unless you feel so inclined to do so.
I think the governor's executive order seemed to cover it. I wanted to check to make sure procedurally, is everyone able to hear Lynn and hear the chief speak from the select board? Did you have any trouble hearing what was just said?
Marie, this is Rich. We picked up a lot of background noise when Lynn was speaking. Sounded like people were moving papers around.
I think that's coming from someone who's also called in. They might have their microphone on mute, so if everyone could be careful about rustling papers, because it's not from this side. I can hear it coming over the speakers. So, well, I think it sounds a little better now. We'll move on to, there's an emergency declaration that I'm going to be reading now, and the select board will be voting on. Whereas a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances demanding... Just a minute, I hear movement again coming from the speakers. Are you having trouble hearing me? No?
No.
Okay, good. Unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances demanding immediate public action has arisen within the town of Long Meadow. And whereas in response to the public health pandemic, COVI, COVID-19 coronavirus, and the work of the town's emergency management team, public safety officials, public health officials, Long Meadow Public Schools, and the entire community to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, I have declared a state of emergency to mitigate any potential spread of COVID-19 coronavirus. This declaration not only gives me sweeping powers, but more importantly avails our town and schools to all federal and state relief and recovery assistance needed. And whereas the select board, upon the advice of the town of Long Meadow's Emergency Management Director, has determined the aforesaid incident poses a present and reasonable imminent danger to public health, safety, or general welfare of the people or their property, so that it has become necessary for the director to utilize and coordinate the services, equipment, supplies, and facilities of existing departments, offices, agencies of the town for the purposes of civil defense, emergency management, and emergency functions. And whereas the select board has determined that the immediate public action is needed to prevent, minimize, or mitigate damage to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the people of Long Meadow or their property, which may otherwise result from the above described incident, and that taking the time required to comply with the various state and local procurement laws would endanger the health or safety of the people or their property. And whereas the select board has recommended that a state of emergency be declared in the town of Long Meadow, and whereas the people of the town of Long Meadow should be able to depend upon guidance from their chief executive officer. Now, therefore, I, Marie Angelidis, Chair of the Select Board of the Town of Long Meadow, Massachusetts, declare that as of 7:00 AM?
Yeah, we're...
Okay. On March 16th, 2020, a state of emergency exists in the town of Long Meadow. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until revoked pursuant to my judgment that the state of emergency no longer exists, dated March 16th, 2020. Any questions in regards to the declaration of emergency declaration?
Does that require a second?
We're looking for a motion. Is there a motion to?
I should so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I believe that was Richard Foster who moved and Mark Gold who seconded. Any discussion? We need to do roll call votes with remote participation?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so the emergency declaration has been passed. I will sign this and give this to Lynn, our town manager. Now, moving on down the agenda, are there any resident comments? Have any residents called in and would like to make a comment tonight? All right, not hearing any resident comments. We're looking for any select board comments.
Yes, Marie, I'd like to make a comment.
And this is Richard Foster?
I would like to be the first to reach out and thank the town manager, her staff, and the select board chair, Marie Angelidis, for the hard work and dedication they've been putting in this last week. We know it's been a stressful period of time, and I, for one, appreciate your extra efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would, Marie.
This is Mark Strange?
This is, yeah. So I just wanted to echo Richard's comments. You guys have done such a great job this week. It's been reassuring, and I just wanted to thank you and Lynn and Marty and Chief Dearborn, the whole team, for doing such a great job, keeping us aware of what's going on and keeping us where we need to be. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, why don't we move to a short town manager report, and then we'll go directly into our business.
Yes, so my report this week is pretty thin, as you can imagine. We've been working on a lot of other things. The LED streetlight project, we had the first shipment of Cobra heads received at the DPW. Ardent Engineering is expected to begin installation of the lights as early as March 17th, which is tomorrow. We received word that the manufacturing facility in Wuhan, China, has reopened, and the decorative light fixtures are in process. We'll have a better idea on installation timeline once we have confirmation on the order fulfillment and shipping. Due to the delays in manufacturing, MAPC has extended the project completion deadline to June 30th, 2020. And an update on water quality, recent required routine sampling has indicated that water contaminants are within allowable limits, and no further outreach or notices were required. Testing is done quarterly at DEP-approved points. Mot McDonald is working on the hydraulic model and tracer study, and once completed, they will be available to attend a future select board meeting to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Only thing I want to add to the report, the select board members know, but the task force has been meeting weekly, and all of the department heads, I think they've been doing an excellent job.
They have. They've been a tremendous team to work with. It's been great. It's making a very bad situation better because of them.
And we appreciate you're new on the team, and I'm hearing very good reports that things are going smoothly. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the minutes. I'm looking for a motion to accept the March 2nd minutes?
I'd like to place a motion on the table to reapprove the March 2nd, 2020, Long Meadow Select Board Minutes.
Is, that was Richard? And Mark Gold seconded it? And could I have a roll call vote? Debbie?
Marie?
I was abstaining.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Tom?
I would abstain.
And Richard?
I believe I have to abstain, too. I don't think I was there.
Nope, you were. You were running the meeting.
Then I vote yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we'll move on to March 9th minutes. Is there a motion?
Place a motion on the table that we approve the March 9th, 2020, Long Meadow Select Board Minutes.
And is there a second? Let's see, present was Mark Strange and Tom Lakusha. Tom or Mark, can you second those?
Yeah, I'll second them.
So I have Tom seconding, and the motion's on the floor from Richard, and I need a roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Abstain.
Tom?
Yes.
And Richard?
Abstain.
Okay. And we're going to move on to the review and approve the street closure for the lacrosse jamboree. And before we start the discussion on that, I believe Officer is on the line to give us a brief review of the traffic report?
That's correct.
Would you identify yourself and tell us about what was decided?
Yep, this is Carl Mazefaro, the Traffic and Safety Supervisor for the Long Meadow Police Department. The previous petition went before the board, and the board had made some recommendations and suggestions of how to improve our request, and we've did our best to meet all those. We've added two additional police officers there for the details, so we'll have four police officers there. There'll be one at Grassy Gutter and Williams assisting with traffic. There'll be one at Grassy Gutter in Bliss. And then the two officers at the road closures, which would be Bliss Road and Blueberry Hill, and Bliss Road and Bliss Court. Additionally, we're going to be placing signs that say "Residence Only" at the entrance of Wilken, Terry, Willett, and Concord Road, so there'll be no parking on those streets. And parking will be directed to the high school parking lot for the participants. Additionally, teams that will be dropping off their tents and stuff will be going into the Blueberry Hill parking lot to access the wood line onto the field from there. Additionally, the, the Lacrosse Committee has reached out to all the businesses. I have also reached out to, to Mr., to the owner of Long Meadow Shops, and I'll be working with him about parking and stuff regarding that.
All right, thank you. To make this easier, I'm going to roll call also comments or questions. So, Richard Foster, do you have any questions for Officer or comments?
Questions or comments?
Mark Gold?
Yes, I do. I have two for Officer Mazefaro. The first one is, I mean, the fact that, that the, I guess it's the north side of that part of the street has a fence, there's only a limited number of entries to the fields on the north side. And, you know, was any thought given to putting up a snow fence along the south side, which is the high school side? And just having people cross with a crosswalk at, where they can get into the, actually get into the fields on the, on the Blueberry Hill School side, rather than go through this effort of closing down the streets? Since, you know, people can cross the street anywhere they want to, but they can only walk into that, you know, in one particular place. That's my first question. I'll let you answer that one, and then I have one other follow-up.
We did look at that. I actually received a resident comment about that, too, from Mr. Moran, and I had talked to him about that, because there are three crossing guard, crosswalks there. And with the amount of teams from talking to the lacrosse program going back and forth there, safety-wise, we just felt that the closure of the road would be the safest way and the free passage with that, with the amount of traffic that's going to be over there. And they're estimating, if that's, even if this tournament takes place, they're estimating anywhere from 1,200 to 1,500 people will be there for this tournament. So, that was one of the things we did look at, was the amount of participants that are going to be there, and the easiest for free passage back and forth between all the fields. Because there's going to be one, two, there's going to be four fields over on Russell Field, and then there's going to be three on the high school side that are going to be utilizing the sports. So we did look at that, about having three crossing guards there, but safety-wise, we just thought it would be the easiest with the road closure for that.
Okay, the second question that concerns parking and overflow parking is, do you know if the organizers have found anything about overflow parking, whether it's Blueberry Hill School or Williams Middle School? Because I can just imagine that the neighborhood streets are going to get overwhelmed. And I see it said "Residence Only" on, you know, Wilken and those streets, but is it going to, are there going to be temporary no parking signs along Grassy Gutter and along any of those streets?
Yes, absolutely. There will be no parking signs. We, we're going to be encouraging as, as, as the best we can for everybody to be parking in the high school parking lot. Between, from talking to the high school, between the main parking lot and, the main parking lot holds about 400 cars. So the way the, the way the organizers have explained it to us is, all, not all 1,200 people are going to be there all day long. So as some people end their games early, they're going to be leaving, and then new people are going to be coming in for games. So you're going to have a rotation of participants all through the day. So, but yes, to your question, there will be no parking signs up Grassy Gutter, up Blueberry, and then in their literature, they're going to be telling where to park. And again, I'll be meeting with, with the operations at the shops to discuss, to make sure there will be no parking at the shops, too, and to figure out how we're going to go that way.
And my final question is, four officers there, and it's Long Meadow days, you're up, you're up for the task?
Absolutely. So, there will be a supervisor designated to the lacrosse tournament. So whether we have other officers from other communities coming in to help us fill the details, or it's Long Meadow officers, you will have a Long Meadow Sergeant assigned to that specific detail to make sure everything is running smoothly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom, do you have any questions?
Yes, Officer Mazefaro, thanks for coming in and putting so much time into developing this. I like Mark's idea of the snow fence, but I'm wondering if DPW may have some sort of barriers that could be placed there, too. I guess I'd ask you to look into something like that.
Absolutely.
So a car couldn't go down that, those, you know, that section of this road that's going to be closed.
Well, we are going to have the horses there.
Right.
So, so there will be barriers across, across the road on both ends, and there'll be an officer standing there, making sure traffic is not getting through there at all.
Okay, all right. And the only other thing is, I know when kids used to, my kids are in high school, and they had open house, there were an awful lot of cars, and people would pass, park in Grassy Gutter. Is that something that still happens when there's an open house? I mean, is there's that much of an overflow? Could we allow that kind of parking for this event?
For, if we had overall parking on Grassy Gutter? If it came to that, I guess we would. Well, as the tournament's going on and as it's evolving during the day, we'll assess the parking, figure out where we'd have to move the parking. I mean, again, they're, they're temporary no parking signs, so they can always be pulled up if we have to, to do that. Our goal is to have as least impact on the residents as possible. You're already going to have an impact with that amount of people coming in. So I don't want residents looking out the window and seeing a line of cars parked in front of their house. That's what I'm trying to prevent here by limiting residents only onto those streets that are adjacent to the tournament.
Sure. But, but when they have a big open house at school, don't residents park on Grassy Gutter still?
If the parking lot is full, you will get residents parking on Grassy Gutter, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. And that's, again, it's town property, it shouldn't affect the residents.
It is, yep, yep. Like I said, I'm just, just trying to make the residents happy with this and, and not have any complaints.
Well, I'm hoping that people could park in the, in the shops, I think that would be good.
Yeah, I'll, again, I'll talk with the shops management to see how they want to go about that. Obviously, they're excited about this amount of people coming in and the business that it's going to draw. So I will, I'll be meeting with them and figuring out how to go about that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark Strange, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions. I just wanted to say it's a good event, particularly for our businesses in that area, considering what's going on right now, if the event goes off. And again, I appreciate everything the police department's going to make everybody safe. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm now looking for a motion to approve the street closure for May 16th, 2020, Bliss Road, from the crosswalk just east of Blueberry Hill Road, in the west, to the crosswalk just west of Bliss Court, in the east.
Marie, it sounds like you've already read the motion, so I'll move the motion.
That's Richard Foster, and is there a second?
I'll second it.
And that's Tom Lakusha. We're going to have a roll call vote.
Marie, I have another question for Sergeant Mazefaro, if I could, Mark Gold?
Okay, Mark?
Go ahead, Mr. Gold.
Yeah, in the, in the plans that you sent, one of my concerns was cars exiting Long Meadow Shops at the, I'll call it the exit office at the bank, which is, you know, closest to where, you know, the El Paso is.
Yeah, right by the side.
Right, it seems that that's after your barricade.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, you know, we've got to make sure those cars getting out of there can only turn left to go down Williams Court, can't turn right down the area.
Yep, so I, we've had that section of road closed for a variety of issues over the years, whether it's, you know, road jobs, details, or there's been a road race that Fleet Feet used to put on. And we've always had proper signage, letting them know that they have, the roads closed, and that they have to either, they have to go down Bliss Court to go around. So we'll make sure there is proper signage, that they are aware that they cannot turn, turn down Bliss Road.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, Debbie, you want to do the roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
by the office and sign this also?
Yeah, at some point.
Okay. I'll let you fill out the rest of this, and I'll sign it. And this police chief has to sign, I guess.
Marie, can we not use remote participation as a signatory authority on that?
Lynn?
I don't know yet.
And since it's, it's not for a while, I think we were...
Right. If we're still under the restrictions that we're under right now, this event won't take place.
So, I would say, and again, it could be even brought to our next meeting if people can't come by the office, and we can do it then. Or, let me know, and if you prefer to just, I'll swing it by your, your house and have you sign. We just need a majority signatures, that's it. We don't need everyone signing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the appointment of the... Oh, thank you, Officer, I really appreciate you calling in.
Thank you.
All right, now, we're moving on to the appointment of a historic commission member, and I'm looking for a motion to approve Michael Smith to the Historic Commission for a term expiring 6/2022.
So, move.
Don't move.
Okay, so, I have Mark Gold moving. And is there a second? Richard Foster?
Second.
Okay. And any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yep.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to go on down to deal with the other votes before we deal with the budget. And so, the next item on the list is the vote for the SOIs for middle school. The schools are voted to approve the SOIs, one for Williams Middle School and the other for Glenbrook Middle School. So, I'm looking for a motion on, to be read on Williams Street, Williams Middle School.
Are you going to read the motion?
I'm looking to see if, well, I'll read the motion, and then I guess I'll look for so moved. So, it's resolved, having convened...
Hold on, Marie.
Yeah.
Okay, I just found it. Resolve, having convened an open meeting on March 16, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of the Town of Long Metal, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form no later than April 8, 2020, for the Williams Middle School located at 410 Williams Street, Long Metal, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement and renovation of the building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation, and modernization of the school facility system such as roofs, those boilers, heating and ventilation system to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility. Replacement of or addition to, or addition to obsolete, obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specify acknowledgement that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of its application, the award of the grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
And that was Tom?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion?
The superintendent is on the call.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to speak to the motion?
I'm flexible on that. If it would, if I could provide some background, I'm happy to, or I'm just available for questions, so however you would like to approach it, Marie.
Well, let's start with questions. Mark Gold, do you have any questions or comments for Marty O'Shea?
Yeah, I do. I did not get a copy of the revised SOI. My understanding is somewhere out on the school committee's website, but generally we have been sent that in the past, but to some degree, I feel a lack of knowledge of what I'm signing, so I'm tending to abstain here because I don't have enough information. But Superintendent O'Shea, how does this differ from the SOIs of previous years?
I'd say largely it was updated to reflect the additional year of aging of systems. I'd say that there wasn't any difference between this year's and previous year's in terms of the direction or the case that we are trying to make with the MSBA. We didn't take a different position on the priority building or the priority standards that we had to identify. There was, there was a few facility-related updates that we included. Glenbrook, if I'm saying this properly, had some electrical switch gear that, that went out on us that caused a power outage earlier in the year, so we tried to convey that, you know, the vulnerability of the electrical setup at Glenbrook. Other than that, Mark, I think it's, it's largely similar, you know, in terms of the philosophy of the case that we're making, it didn't depart from previous year.
Okay, just a quick follow-up, then. In the previous year, it was MSBA come tell us whether we need one or two new renovate... Is it the same type of approach?
I, I've never really felt that the MSBA directs the conversation that way. I feel like they, my experience, they work with districts to find a solution, a local solution that works, both educationally, fiscally, and frankly, they're also attentive to, you know, what the needs or interests of the community are. So, they would say that they work in partnerships with local districts, and I would say that that's been my experience as well. Now, there might be some approaches that they rule out, because ultimately, they're paying potentially half the bill on this, but I've found them to really want to partner with local districts on the solutions.
Thank you.
So, could I clarify? I'm sorry if you didn't get a copy of the SOI. It's my understanding that we had sent that over, and it was in the packet. Obviously, it was a busy couple of weeks, but...
And Marty, if I could just add, there's a link on the agenda, and if you scroll past the vote, there's 61 pages of documents in that one document. So, it's possible that you just have to scroll down a little bit further?
Yeah, I was, when you said you were concerned, Mark, about not seeing it, I assumed it wasn't in, but I went back, and it was there, 61 pages. And I spoke to Armin Ray, who said, if you look, it's highlighted where the changes are.
Thank you.
Richard, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I didn't have any questions.
Tom?
Yes, I was just wondering if there'd be a point where there'd be some preliminary meetings to look at a local solution, and what would work best for the town regarding these two buildings and potential middle school solutions. Is that something that would happen in the next year or two, or are you waiting to hear something back from the...
I think if, if the, say, if the school committee or in the select board felt that we might benefit from doing some advanced work with the community in terms of trying to understand what the community might be interested in, we certainly could do that. I think that, really, in my experience, that conversation that you described, Tom, happens with, through the feasibility study. And it's through that feasibility study that communities start to narrow the options and start to figure out what's fiscally viable, what's viable from an architectural and engineering perspective. And, you know, the MSBA will come in, and they do try to pick the temperature of the local community and try to understand what the community wants to get behind. So, I think all those things kind of happen simultaneously, but it's really the feasibility study that drives the, the choices that are available to the, to the community. It's obviously, I know many of you are very, very familiar with this, but it's a very extensive feasibility study that the MSBA funds. You know, I would imagine it would be a three-quarters of a million or a million-dollar feasibility study, at least in past experience with any guide.
Okay, thank you for answering my question. And actually, that makes sense, because, you know, from year to year, things could change in terms of middle school education, and so you'd want to really make those determinations as close to when it's going to be funded. So, thank you.
And I think the feasibility studies tend to assist with the discussion, the option identification, because they, they help communities rule in potential options and rule out potential options based on, based on the site and the funding and the scope that the community might want to pursue.
Thank you. Mark Strange, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a comment, Marie. So, we toured both middle schools with Marty and Nick Tragantus and some others, and this is my first bite at the apple, but I'd never been in either middle school, and it's apparent that both schools need significant renovations and/or we need a new school. And my understanding is that from the time we get approved for, or SOI gets approved, we're about seven years out from a new school or schools. So, I think we need to keep on applying and submitting SOIs every year until hopefully we get approved sooner than later, so we can start this process for the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Marty. Could I have a roll call vote, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Looking for someone to read the motion for the Glenbrook, Glenbrook Middle School?
Okay, Marie, there we go. Having convened in an open meeting on March 16, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of the Town of Long Metal, in accordance with its charter and bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to the Massachusetts Building Authority a Statement of Interest Form dated no later than April 8, 2020, for the Glenbrook Middle School located at 110 Cambridge Circle, Long Metal, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. In the future, replacement of renovation of the building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in condition seriously jeopardizing health and safety of schoolchildren with no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation, and schoolchildren where no alternative exists. I believe I just read the same statement. Replacement, renovation, and modernization of the school facility system such as roofs, windows, boilers, and ventilation system to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete building in order to provide for a range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority is in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of the application, the award of the grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town to filling, to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And that was Tom seconding it. Any further questions for Marty in regards to the Glenbrook motion? A roll call vote, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard? Richard?
Okay.
Tom?
Tom, yes.
Okay, thank you, it passes. Thank you very much, Marty, for calling in.
Thank you very much for everybody's time. I appreciate the support. Thanks, Marty. Take care.
All right, I'm going to move on to legal retainer fee review. Lynn, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. At, at one of our last select board meetings, I brought this up and asked, I think it was March 2nd, and asked for a representative from the board to attend a meeting with myself and Finance Director Paul Pesterzik to meet with the town council to discuss the retainer fee. The fees have not been amended since 2014, and they were looking to address that, given that the amount of hours has increased pretty substantially over the last few fiscal years. We met with them on March 5th, with Attorney Belcher Timmy, on March 5th, and came up with what we feel like is a good compromise, at least for this initial year. And I'm bringing this back here to the board to have a conversation about, to decide if we go ahead and finalize this engagement letter, or an engagement letter would be drafted and based on what we agree to, if we want to proceed this route, or if we want to do something different, including, you know, retain, retaining a different firm, or looking at what those costs could be if we wanted to do that. Have all of you had a chance to look at what was attached on the agenda?
Yeah, I could look at it.
All right, why don't we see if there's any questions? Richard Foster, do you have any questions or concerns for Lynn in regards to engaging Dotary Wallace Pillsbury Murphy?
No, I don't for Lynn. The only thing I would do, Mark Gold, you were part of this assignment, so could I hear your views on this?
Yeah, thank you, Richard. I was, and I did sit in on that meeting. Clearly, you know, an increase is necessary, or appropriately. The big question for me is, you know, how do you structure that? So, obviously, we don't want to be overpaying for what we have been paying, so, you know, if you look at the table that's in the document we saw, we figure, you know, 400 hours is pretty, pretty minimal, and we're almost certainly going to exceed the 400 hours. And so, we looked at that as kind of the compromise, although they had asked about, you know, one of the recommendations was perhaps $81,000 as a retainer. We thought $64,000 was probably better for that, for that 400 hours. And so, I'm comfortable with Lynn's recommendations here.
Thank you, Mark.
Any, let's see. Tom, do you have any questions or concerns for Mark and Lynn?
Well, no, I guess it's inevitable this is going to happen. We've been able to hold on to this rate since 2014, and so, it looks like we're going to have to increase the amount of money, yep?
Mark Strange, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, I tend to agree. You know, my initial thought was, you know, potentially seeking other quotes from different firms to see what, you know, what a market rate would be for a retainer. But looking at the, the chart that was provided, looks like we've been, or Dotary Wallace has been working at a discount for, or quite a discount for, for a bit, so I don't have any problems with increasing the retainer.
Okay.
Marie, if I could just respond to Mark's question, we last looked at, because I brought that up at the, at the, at the meeting that we had, that this could and might trigger a general review of, of legal firms and legal fees. I will say that we didn't, we last went out looking for them, it's probably six or seven years ago. At that time, the, the other bids were greater than what we're approving tonight, and that was just a go from, from other firms. So, the price is still right. The issue is, we feel we're getting the right level of service from me, more than anything else. And the only other comment I'll say is, you know, I worked with, with Rosemary pretty extensively on the school committee issues, and they worked a lot on the library issues, and so, you know, they've been putting a lot of time in this last year or so, on just several specific issues, and who knows what's going to come up next year.
If I could just follow up on that, Marie. So, yeah, I mean, I have no complaints. My, my sample size is obviously a lot smaller than, than yours, but my experience with Jesse has been, has been overwhelmingly positive. I have no concerns or complaints with their, their level of service, just questioning, obviously, what they're, what we're paying them, but it sounds like we're, we got a pretty good deal.
Is there a motion to sign an engagement letter with Dotary Wallace Pillsbury Murphy?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
And that was Mark Gold, and it was Richard Foster who seconded it. Roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving on to the DIF percentage capture. Paul, do you want to just give us a quick synopsis on this vote?
This DIF percent capture is something that the select board needs to vote on annually. It's asking that we take, in this particular case, 90% of the incremental revenue on the DIF property. That there, the DIF tax revenue to the town in FY '20 was roughly $205,000. If we take 90% of that moving forward, we're at about $185,000. That $185,000 is meant to be set aside in order to cover the debt service on the project alone that we took out a few years back. And again, historically, we've had to use a percentage capture of 100% because all the incremental revenue was going towards the debt service. But now we have a little leeway. That extra 10% will go right into the general fund. And again, I think that coupled with the amount of money that we began to receive from the Town of East Long Meadow, we should be about $35,000 that will go directly into the general fund in FY '21 and still be able to cover all the debt service associated with that loan. But it is a requirement under the DIF provisions of the law that the selectmen vote on this percent capture.
Mark Gold, do you have any questions for Paul? No? Richard Foster, do you have any questions?
No.
Tom Lakusha?
Yeah, Paul, the way I understand what you have here, the length of term that we pay for this loan isn't going to change, right?
No, the loan, all the loan debt service is already established, so it really has nothing to do with the loan that is already taken out.
Okay. And when is that loan mature? When will we be done paying it?
It was a 20-year loan. I believe this is, be the third year of it. So, we're talking about 2039, somewhere in that vicinity.
Okay. Because that kind of protects us a little bit about changes to the property, you know, and that's my understanding. So, it sounds like you're on the right track. Thank you.
Mark Strange, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion that the select board utilize 90% of the Dwight Road Improvement District's incremental tax revenues in establishing the FY 2021 district improvement financing budget.
Approval.
Okay, so Tom moved. Is there a second?
Yeah. Mark Gold, I second it.
Mark seconding it. Okay, any further questions or discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Tom Lakusha?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to the vote on the Solid Waste Recycling Enterprise Fund. Do you want to give us a little background, Paul?
Sure. Over the last two fiscal years, we've had a management letter finding basically asking us to look at whether we're truly operating an enterprise fund mainly in the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. And actually, in this particular year, it also addressed the Stormwater Fund. The Stormwater Fund, the select board had taken up a policy in the fall that they will incrementally reduce the reliance on the tax levy and have a more of a 100% funding through stormwater fees over time. So, I think that one should certainly remain as an enterprise fund. But the reality is, on the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, that we actually fund very little of the whole enterprise fund out of revenue. And an enterprise fund was basically the, almost the definition of an enterprise fund is almost to have the revenues equate to the expenditures. And we're, again, we're nowhere near that. As part of the management letter finding, I said that I would bring this forward to the select board to at least, you know, make a decision on how they wanted to proceed with it. It would be my recommendation that we abandon the enterprise fund accounting system for the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund effective 2022. That would give us a year to make this effective. We need to have a town meeting vote in order to actually have that done. And the accounting changeover, it would not be great. Basically, what will happen is the recycling facility will be basically just a different department in the general fund under the DPW, as is their grounds or their building maintenance programs. The revenues generated from the recycling fees, mainly from the permits, will go into the general fund. And the, there will no longer be a subsidy at the enterprise fund if it doesn't exist. So, there's really no financial gain or loss that the town is going to incur on this. It is strictly an accounting measure that is taking place. But I'm bringing it forward according to the management finding with the recommendation that we abandon it for FY 2022.
Mark Gold, do you have questions or comments for Paul?
Yeah, I do, Paul. One of my concerns is segregation of funds, for example, sale of blue bags, you know, or income from the recycling center. Is there a way short, or I should say, what is the way short of an enterprise fund that we can assure the segregation of funds that have both income and expenses directly related to our waste management and recycling programs?
I'm not quite sure when you say segregation. We'll be able to do the same accounting for the enterprise fund, for the recycling enterprise fund. So, we'll be able to identify what is coming in from every source as it is now, whether it's from blue bag sales, whether it's from permits. The only thing that will be changing is that we will be accounting for in a different fund. So, our account numbers will change a little bit, only to identify the fund, but we will have all the same detail available to the select board should they want to see that as a, I don't want to call it a profit center, but had they want to see that as a, you know, some type of service center, that identical information can be provided.
Yeah, well, that was my intent, so we can find out, you know, what the operational deficit or surplus may be for that department. You answered my question, thank you.
Right.
Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't think so, Marie. I'm wondering why, when the account was set up the way it was, that we weren't treating it more as an enterprise fund. And we know the tax dollars were supporting it, but it would seem to me like the money could have been coming out the tax base supporting that, and it would have been almost identical to an enterprise fund. So, I'm not quite sure I understand why we're abandoning this over an accounting error, since it seems like we were already doing it, we just weren't labeling the funds as such. Paul, can you help me on that?
Well, I thought I heard you use the word error. It's not an accounting error. It's just a methodology of accounting that, again, the auditors, the independent auditors are making a recommendation because there is such a large subsidy, probably close to 80% of that fund is coming from the general fund tax revenue, that it, in their mind, and I think it's legitimate, that they have some concerns that if 80% of it is coming from the general fund, why not do all the accounting in the general fund?
Yeah, okay, Paul. Yeah, I back up. I see your point 100%. It has never been a true enterprise account because we've been funding, say, 70, 80% of it out of tax base, so it never has really been a total enterprise fund.
Correct.
Okay, no, totally agree.
Tom, any questions or comments?
Yes. So, was that 80% figure different when the recycling center was getting money for plastic and paper? And...
Tom, it was probably maybe 70% at one point in time that the subsidy was. You know, we're talking about another $40,000 or $50,000 swing in revenues that would have come in from those recyclables. And, you know, you're also talking about a million-dollar enterprise fund. So, certainly, the subsidy could have dropped around 70 or maybe a little bit below 70. But actually, moving forward in this fiscal year, I mean, we're talking to a number that's probably greater than, greater than 80%. It's almost a million of the million-three that will be coming from the general fund subsidy for FY '21.
Well, because I'm thinking that, you know, making this change at this point in time might be a little premature, in terms of my view, because there is a possibility that as trade agreements change with China, that the recycling part of the formula could change. And, you know, we don't know if it would be, how significant it would be, but we know that, you know, we're not getting in recyclables for over a year period, the price could go up. And so, I don't know. I mean, I guess I would not be that supportive of this change at this time, because, you know, the figures we're getting on recycling plastic and paper aren't really reflecting, you know, what the past has been. And I don't think the future is going to be as bleak as it is right now.
Mark, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't.
Okay. All right. I think the only reason to keep the enterprise fund is if we start charging for trash. I think if we start to do that after giving everyone a smaller barrel, we'll be, there'll be a backlash.
Again, if there was a major influx of revenue of maybe a half a million dollars, you would be more justified in having 50, 60, or even 70% coming out of revenues, fees, as opposed to the 70 or 80% that's coming out of the general tax levy. So, unless there's going to be that major influx, and Tom, I don't think recycling markets are going to ever get us the $500,000 figure in those types of revenues to have that big swing here. But that would be the only time that I would say, yes, it's worthwhile keeping the recycling as an enterprise fund. I just, I just don't see that major influx of revenues coming in there.
I guess I have to trust your predictions. You're pretty good at this stuff, so, thank you.
Tom, maybe we can, this is Mark Gold, maybe we can, you know, the motion's going to be to ask or direct the town manager and CFO to set in place the policies and procedures or change, or motions needed to make a change at the, you know, May 2021 town meeting for to be effective in fiscal year 2022. To make that motion now, you know, gives us another year to see where it is. We can always say we're not going to put it on the warrant in 2021, but at least let them get going and find out what they need to do to get that on, that May 2021 warrant.
Good idea. Thank you.
I mean, town meeting will have to vote to rescind this. So, you know, what you're doing now is just taking us a step in that direction, but it's ultimately up to town meeting to rescind this, the vote that was previously taken to create the enterprise fund.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to abandon the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund accounting in FY 2022.
So moved.
And that was Richard Foster. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark Strange seconded it. I'm looking for a roll call vote.
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to seasonal renewal certification. And I don't have the name of the person here on this. Who is, who are we looking to renew?
Yeah, Clubhouse Cafe.
Clubhouse Cafe in Fraconia is looking for a seasonal renewal. Before we move into that, there was an email of a request by her in regards to the current executive order on whether we were going to, what was she asking for?
I think that was a different establishment.
Oh, it was a different establishment.
If it's what I'm thinking about, about the fees.
Pro-
Right, yes. That's a different establishment.
It is a different. All right, so we'll go ahead with this. Is there a motion to approve the seasonal liquor license renewal for the club-
Clubhouse Cafe.
Clubhouse Cafe at Fraconia Golf Course.
So moved.
And that was Tom Lakusha moved and Mark Gold seconded. Okay, is there a roll call vote?
Can I have a question first, Marie?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, Debbie, is this the same licensee as in the past? They haven't made any changes again this year, have they?
Right, no changes. It's a seasonal renewal. That's why it's different than the annual seasonal start, May 1st.
Same owner.
Right, but it's the same people's name on the, on the, on the application.
Same owner.
Thank you.
Richard, did you have any questions?
No.
Tom?
No.
Mark Strange?
Nope.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, now let's go back up to the budget and the warrant. Paul or Lynn, do you want to talk to us about what our options are in this emergency management in regards to town meeting?
Sure. So, as of right now, the budget and the warrant articles, we would be asking that you vote on them with the presumption that we will hold annual town meeting on May 12th. There, the governor has filed some legislation to allow for some modifications to quorum, to the timeline for postponing or recessing the town meeting and then postponing out 30 days. We're just evaluating all of this information as it comes in and monitoring it. But as of right now, we're just proceeding as if it will take place on May 12th and making changes if we need to, once we, once this comes into focus better.
So, if the emergency situation still stands at the time of town meeting, the moderator will open and close the meeting and move it for 30 days out?
Open, recess it to a date within 30 days.
Within 30 days. Now, I know, Mark, you were, Mark Gold was concerned about where we're going to be financially. The budget we're planning now could be different compared to what happens financially with the state and also in town. Paul, did you want to address that?
I think the concern was, mainly, are we going to be losing revenues? Probably with the FY '21 state aid numbers, I think is probably the biggest concern. Because Long Meadow relies, you know, somewhere in the vicinity of about 10% of its budget, general fund budget, coming from the state, I don't want to say it puts us in a good spot, but it puts us in a much better spot than a community that relies 50 or 60% of state revenues. So, that any, if we did take a hit on state revenues, right now, there's an anticipation of, I believe, a $165,000 increase in state revenues in the FY '21 budget estimate. And that if that number went down, depending on the severity of that, we would look at any, we could look at any excess capacity. Right now, we're at the 1.87% of the 2.5% allowable. So, right now, you have $300,000 in excess capacity that you can utilize for taxation or from taxation without dipping into reserves. And if need be, if we had to dip into reserves, we could, you know, we could technically, if we find out this bad information after the budget is passed about a reduction in state aid, we could technically fill the gap with anticipated FY '21 free cash or another source of reserves at that point in time. So, I'm not worried about, at this point in time anyway, I'm not worried about an extreme hit that the Town of Long Meadow can absorb for at least that first year. You know, longer-term issues may develop, but, you know, the FY '21, I think we can, you know, I think we can absorb any hit that's going to be given. to us.
All right. I'm going to go through the select board members. Uh, Mark Gold, do you have any questions or comments for Paul or Lynn?
Yeah, I do. And it's mostly about the, just what Paul was talking about. I mean, if I've looked at the, the revenue line, Paul, and, you know, I can't believe this state's going to take the kind of hit they're taking in, in, in both sales tax and uh, income tax without adjusting what they send us. I also think we're going to take as a town a hit on our meals tax revenue, although I don't know what's going on with takeout, but I believe there's going to be a hit on that. If, if MGM doesn't go to the, the gaming commission and say they want to pay us, you know, one-twelfth less than they already are because they've been closed for a month or however long they've closed, that would shock me as well. I think there's an awful lot of downside on, on revenue, and I think, you know, we ought to be taking this opportunity because we know now, or we, I suspect now, that our revenue is going to be on the, you know, is, is going to be below where we projected it to be, to, to make some adjustments. You know, I don't know how to do that. I, I, you know, I put out something saying, I thought, a one-twelfth budget for the first month, and, you know, rather than take this to town meeting, thinking that we're going to have to, or assuming we're going to have to go back and, and change it later, I'd much rather go to a, a town meeting with something that we know we can live with for a month or six weeks or eight weeks, and then we're going to go back anyway. We're either going to go back to cut it, or we're going to go back to reestablish it. So it's not so much of a question, it's a comment. I just am concerned about approving a budget with very, very shaky revenue figures.
Well, um, Lynn, my understanding is the one-twelfth budget would be what we would be able to do for one month only?
Yes.
Yeah. So that would be July. Uh, Paul, you're saying that the way we could handle that was with reserves. If you wanted to do cuts, we could also do it by a motion on the floor, uh, in June when we have, if, if things are going so badly, we probably aren't going to get a town meeting vote until June, which we would know what was happening with our revenues, and we could put a motion on the floor to cut the budget at that point in time. Is that correct, Paul?
Yes. There's, there's a couple of things. One, the state does have a fairly hard stabilization fund, so I would have to assume that they would mitigate any of these lost revenues being incurred to some degree, um, because if they do make a very substantial cut, you're going to have your major cities really be in turmoil when they're 50% funded by the state. If, if, again, we can make motions to amend on the floor of town meeting, um, if and when that town meeting is held, um, and then subsequently, if the town meeting is held and, um, we need to make, and town meeting goes through and we need to make further cuts, um, you know, depending on the timing, we could, again, go back to it, amend the budget as needed, looking at expenses and revenues in order, you know, in order to make that balance. Um, I'm just a little weary of making cuts that may not, um, come to fruition. Um, and I'm also cognizant of the fact that we need, the school collective bargaining agreements, um, if there are going to be cuts, that they have ample notification, um, as far as layoffs within the schools. Um, so it's, you know, there's, there's no easy answer. I will say that, and it's really kind of up, up to the board. Um, I, I just, I just believe that the impact is not going to be so great that we can't absorb this hit in FY '21.
Um, any other questions or comments, Mark? Gold?
Yeah, I, I, I guess that, you know, I guess we need to make a decision individually in the board on when do we think we're going to pass a, or ask the town to pass a, a town budget. And, and I just can't see it happening in May. And it's, hopefully, it's going to happen in June, maybe even July, but that's why getting us going through the month of July and then setting the budget, even if it ends up being this budget, at least then we'll know we're passing something that we can, you know, we can stand behind and we can support financially. I'm very, very fiscally conservative, and I'm concerned about, you know, passing a budget that, you know, we're, we're hoping these revenues come in or saying we're going to pull out of our, our reserves for it. I understand this is the rainy, is the rainy days, but if you know it before you pass the budget, why, you know, why wouldn't we make some adjustments now? That's my only comment.
Okay. Richard, do you have any, uh, comments or questions for Lynn or Paul?
Yeah, I have a comment. Uh, I don't know why we can't take the same approach that's been used across the, across the United States with the continuing resolution. This is not the first budget crisis that's ever been had. Uh, if we look towards the federal government, every year, they have the same budget crisis, and they, they just implement a continuing resolution, which when you boil it down to the details says that you can expend the same amount that you spent at this time last year, but not to exceed by maybe 2% or 3%. I realize we're a little bit different, that we are, we don't have authorized funds for next year, except we do have the revenue coming in, and that's going to have to be to the, to the legal people to determine, but continuing resolution is, is a wonderful way to proceed forward without, uh, you know, giving away the bank and without, uh, having too much, uh, too much, uh, problems, because we know our tax base is solid. We know approximately what our income is going to be for the next year, and if we don't exceed by maybe 2% to 3%, what we spent last year at this time, we're not going to go in the hole, or at least we shouldn't be. It's a calculated guess at that point. Thank you, Marie.
I'm, I'm just not aware of any provision that will allow the community to operate in that fashion with the continued resolution. Um, and I don't know, Lynn, if you want to comment that. Usually, there has to be legislative action, um, with regard to appropriations, um, you know, certainly, the one-twelfth budget, we can go to town meeting and do the one-twelfth budget, um, but the, uh, the, the resolution, as, as the federal government has, has utilized or maybe some other states, I'm just not aware of that's allowable in Massachusetts.
Well, Paul, I would imagine the one-twelfth budget is, is almost the same thing, as long as we agree on where the expenditure limits will be, uh, moving forward. I mean, there's nothing wrong with the one-twelfth, if you want a one-twelfth budget plus, uh, maybe a 2% escalation clause. If that's even legal with our former government. I, I mean, I'm, I'm leaning towards you, because with our former government, it seems like everything revolves around our town meeting and the approval of our budget by 160 of our citizens.
Marie, was there, what was the, what was the thing that the governor's office sent out, that he was submitting a couple of, of, of emergency measures to the legislature? Wasn't one of them?
Yes.
One-twelfth budgets?
Yes, it was.
That was the one-twelfth budget that Lynn was talking about? And we're, so we're talking about just a delay. They're not talking about changing the way we manage a budget. They're just talking about a delay of like 30, um, days.
And, and there's, one of the items in there is that you could, um, permit continued month-to-month spending into FY '21 by towns based on prior year fiscal budget with approval of Department of Local Services during states of emergency. The month-to-month authorization would continue so long as state of emergency prevents the adoption of a budget.
My only-
That's what I had in mind when I suggested what I did. I, you know, because I believe that the town meeting should approve the budget, and we should get, you know, not have them approving interim budgets and potential budgets and, but wait till we know where things are, and I truly hope that, and believe that in, you know, eight weeks, we'll know exactly where we are, and we'll go in with the, the real and the final budget.
My, my only, my only concern with a one-twelfth budget, and I, I don't have all the details, is that we have opportunities in July to make, um, payments to the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board and for our insurances, and, you know, in total, those are millions of dollars that we get pretty large discounts if we make those payments all in July. Um, you know, we're talking 60, 70, $80,000 worth of discounts that, you know, those prepayments amount to. So my only concern is I wanted to be aware of that with the one-twelfth budget. I don't know if we would be able to take advantage of those. Um, the, the new regulations also allow the suspension of charter and bylaw dates. Our, our bylaws state that we have to have the town meeting by no later than the second Tuesday in May. Um, obviously, those are new provisions, those, those are suspended. So my preference would be to, if you're going to do anything, to hold off maybe until the latter part of June, to look at the budget and, and make a decision at that point in time as opposed to a one-twelfth budget.
Um, Tom, wait, wait, let's, let's get everyone to be able to speak. Tom, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah. Marie?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, in terms of the discussion we're having now, I don't have any questions or comments, but I did have some questions about the documents that we received in the packet.
Well, is, well, let's stick to, uh, what were these two, these two main issues, yeah. Um, Mark Strange, did you have any comments in regards to, um, the two issues we're discussing now?
Just a quick comment, Marie. Uh, so, you know, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts to, to the budget right now and to the state budget, and we don't really know what's going to happen. Um, I would default to trusting Paul's expertise on this. He, he works with this stuff every single day and has for, for quite a bit of time. So, um, I would defer to Paul's recommendation on the issue.
My concern is that by failing to act, we actually create more of a crisis than we're in right now, and anything that we put on the warrant can be changed on the floor if things get worse, but if things improve and we don't have a budget in front of us, um, we've created a problem, uh, just by anticipating, uh, there could be the worst-case scenario. Uh, but yet, if we go ahead, it's nothing that can't be fixed, whether it's delayed a month, uh, because things are looking badly and we want to wait and see and move the town meeting date till June, or if we have to amend it right there on the floor, everyone will understand if we've hit a fiscal wall. Um, so I think we need to continue activities the way we have been working, the whole, all the departments, and the staff has been working towards this budget, and right now, this budget still stands. Um, we never know what the future is going to hold. I think this past week has shown it to us, and we never know what the governor's going to say tomorrow. Last night was a bit of a surprise. So, um, I think we should still go ahead and move forward on the budget, and then if you feel disagree with that, then we will vote the budget down, and then we'll have to figure out the next step. Mark, you want to now say something again? Mark Gold?
Yeah. I, I didn't want to vote the budget down, I, at all. I, I mean, I, I just think it's premature to put forward a budget that we're not sure of, and I think, you know, if we have the, have the authority to, to defer the town budget or the town meeting to approve this, I'd feel a lot more comfortable knowing that we're going to, what we're going to put before the town is in fact, uh, a budget we can, we can stick with, as opposed to having to come back and modify and potentially cut spending in line items or take money out of, out of, out of reserves. So it's not that I don't like the budget, I just don't think that I feel comfortable that this is going to be the final budget yet, and I don't know what the process is for deferring or delaying town meeting, but if we could do that, I'd be happy doing that.
Lynn, what is the process? My understanding is, right now, we're looking, you don't delay town meeting until after you've posted it. Can we change the town meeting date now?
My understanding was that the legislation that was filed supersedes what the charter was, so therefore, I would, I would believe it would be up to the select board to set the town meeting date, um, at any point in time that they so desired. I, I, that's my understanding. I haven't gotten too deep into it. Um, I, I, I don't know otherwise, but like I said, the requirement of us having, or the requirement of our bylaw, which states the second Tuesday in May, that has, I believe, been superseded by, by this emergency legislation, that it will, again, it can be done at any point in time, um, or post, I'd say postpone, but set just at a different point in time between now and June 30th.
Now, Paul, you said there are certain things that need to be known at certain dates. What is the latest date? We could set town meeting, and you would still be comfortable that you'd be able to hit your targets? And we were talking union contracts and things like that.
Well, again, the, the union contracts are, are already settled. Um, they're up for collective bargaining, it'll be FY '21, they'll be bargaining for FY '22. Um, you know, it'd be nice to get it done earlier, um, but as long as it was done by June 30th, and, you know, my concern, as I said before, was to take advantage of those discounts that are offered in those certain line items. As long as we had an appropriation made, again, preferably in June, you, you get into July and people are going to be going to summer homes and things of that nature. We never really wanted to have a, a town meeting in the summer because of availability. So, again, I, if we had it in June, I, I think it could work out fine as far as I'm concerned.
And then we would have to delay the town election, because the town election is supposed to occur 30 days after town meeting? Or is all that in the air because the executive order has superseded the charter?
I, I, okay, I, I didn't look at the election of the, the charter, the bylaws or the charter state that, that the election has to be-
Because in case we put a ballot initiative, um, to annual town meeting, there has to be so many-
I did not consider that, Marie. I was not aware of that election provision.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, but I'm assuming that the legis, the new legislation is going to supersede all of that also.
Mm-hmm.
I do believe it said elections and town meetings would be, um, the, the language would be superseded.
I have a concern that by postponing, you've actually increased the feeling of insecurity and that the government's not moving forward, and I think even if we do hit, we're going to have some financial hit, Paul, you're saying we can absorb that, and that's the purpose of the stabilization fund and everything else.
Again, I, I, I believe that the hit that we get from the state, yeah, we will take a hit on meals tax, um, for this fiscal year and moving forward, depending on how this whole situation lasts. Um, you know, our meals tax is $135,000 for the year. We already have, you know, half of that money is in pocket, um, so, you know, we may lose tens of thousands of dollars there, it's very likely. Certainly MGM may, may go to the gaming commission. I can understand that one-twelfth, you know, we're talking one-twelfth of what we get there is, you know, maybe $25,000. Um, and the hit on the state aid where we get, you know, six, $7 million worth of money from the state aid, I, I think any cut that the legislature does to the state aid is going to have a greater impact on those larger communities, and I think they would be willing to soften the blow by the utilization of the state stabilization fund, um, as opposed to passing along huge decreases in that first year of this, of this so-called crises.
I think the hit that we took in 2011 was much bigger hit than we could ever imagine taking this year, and even last year, when we had the multiple emergencies that were not, um, reimbursed by the state, I mean, that was hundreds of thousands of dollars that we took in hits last year. I, I, I don't think that we are going to be at the state of utter financial collapse, and if we are, that means everybody else is, and they will understand if we have to, um, amend on the floor, but I'm, I'm afraid by not acting now on our budget, uh, we're, we're sending a stronger message out there.
Community, other communities will be in a much worse position than we are, because our, our, our revenue base is fairly stable, 80% of it coming from tax revenue. Um, you know, again, it's, I mean, again, other communities will be far worse hit than, than Long Meadow. I was going to say something else, but now that's slipped my mind on that.
Okay.
But, again, I, I just can't see that type of huge impact being passed on to the cities in, in one year, um, with regard to state aid.
And the other aspect is that I understood Chief Dearborn is already asking all the departments to say, on a daily basis, uh, tell us about the cost impact that the current crisis is, is costing the town, to keep track of all that, if there is federal money coming down.
Right, right. We've asked every department to maintain a, a separate file with, with their notes on costs incurred, uh, related, related to this virus. Um, you know, again, we haven't incurred major costs at this point in time, um, so, you know, we don't know if there will be reimbursement. I mean, again, the costs aren't that great at this point in time. We don't know how long it's going to last. We don't know what the future's going to bring. Um, just going back a step, I, I just remembered what I was going to say, and- Just going back a step, I just remembered what I was going to say, and there are many years ago, probably in the 2008, 2009 period, where the state hadn't passed budgets until July and August, well after our town meetings. We're kind of in that same predicament that, you know, we just don't know that final number from the state, or potentially, we could not know that final number. We, actually, we rarely know that, I don't think we've ever known that final number, as a matter of fact, when we were at our May town meeting, because the state doesn't give or finalize their state budget until after our town meeting. Historically, then recently, we've been favorable. It's been favorable that we've gotten more money than we've actually had budgeted for. But we have had those situations, you know, 10, 12 years ago, where it was the reverse, when we were going through the recession of the 2007 through 2010 period.
And Lynn, your recommendation now regards to town meeting is, how are we going to handle the uncertainty of town meeting?
I think we're just going to have to play it week by week at this point. I mean, so much has just changed in the last week that I don't feel confident in projecting where we're going to be in eight weeks. But we're just going to continue to monitor it and make adjustments accordingly.
And you have to post the warrant on what date, Paul?
The posting of the warrant actually does not have to be done legally until five days before the annual town meeting, five or seven days.
Oh, really?
But we have a requirement in our bylaws that we give every resident, we drop, you know, we send to every resident at their household a printing of the warrant. And that has to be done two weeks prior to the annual town meeting. And then it takes us a number of weeks to get the printer to do that, everything lined up, so on and so forth. So it's really about a six-week time lag that we have to get everything in order prior to the town meeting date. So if the town meeting date was moved till mid-June, we wouldn't have to get everything in order until sometime in early part of May.
How about this compromise, that we vote on the budget tonight, and we don't close the warrant for posting until we can meet again in one week, or beginning of April, the very last date after finance, and then we will close the warrant. And that way, we'll have another day to make changes if we feel that the crisis has shown that there'll be big differences.
That is fine, whatever's voted on today, we don't have to post the warrant right away. We would normally post the warrant almost simultaneously with all the material going to the printer, so that wouldn't be till the end of the month. And if that was going to give people more time to think about this and make a decision on not only the budget, but on the town meeting date, then, you know, that'll work fine.
Is the April 6th meeting too late?
Yeah, probably the end of March, right?
The April 6th would be too late. I mean, it's supposed to go to the printer the first week of April, March 30th, last week of March.
All right, so if we look at March, so if we vote on it, we could have a possible meeting on the 30th if we find big changes? Or we can always cancel that meeting if there's no...
I would want to do it before the 30th. If it's going to the printer on the 30th, it would need a couple of days in case there are changes.
All right, so we could, what I'm looking to do is to vote on the warrant tonight, but not close it to, and so we'll have, the 28th is Saturday.
Oh, okay.
So it would have to be the 27th on a Friday. And we could, again, do remote participation to see if there's any concerns at this point with the market and the state.
We could certainly do that. That'll give us ample time if there are changes. You know, we'll get going on whatever's voted on this evening.
Right.
If there are changes, we then have the weekend to get everything in order for the printer.
Okay. All right. Let me go through everyone to see their opinion on that process going forward. Mark Strange, how do you feel about that?
That's fine by me.
Tom?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Richard? Richard? All right, Mark?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so let's move to voting on the warrant now. And you'll get notification about the call-in for the 27th. I pulled out, as I sent what's called the green articles, and I would like, I was looking for, and we pulled out the ones that people asked, that they had a special request that they be considered separately from the other green articles. And so, Tom, you had a question about the way I laid things out? No? Am I losing people? Do I have to be concerned I've lost people?
Well, I'm sorry, Marie. I had to mute.
Oh, okay. So Tom, what was the question you had about the way I laid out the warrant articles?
No, on the warrant, on the opening page, it says the meeting will be on Tuesday, the 12th of May, 2020. And I think there's an E in there that doesn't belong.
Oh, okay.
Yep, typo.
So it's a spelling error. That's the first thing I...
Was there anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the green articles, which I will read through, which is Article 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 12, 14, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 31. And I'm not going to, and that's the only one, I'm not including 42. Is there a motion to approve those articles?
Marie, what happened to 11? That was green.
Yeah.
Oh, I circled that, I pulled that out, because that was one that Finance asked us to discuss. So is there a motion to approve those green articles that were just read?
Tom, I think it, a motion, yeah, we could approve those articles that were read.
Tom approved, Tom moved those articles?
A motion, yeah.
Marie, I think Deb needs to...
Do the numbers again? I sent it by email, but I guess I forgot to loop you in. Article 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 12, 14, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 31. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Mark Gold, second. Any discussion on those articles? Tom Lakusha did. So we need a roll call vote.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah, yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now, let's go back through, and Article 11, the Finance Committee, I sent you the notes from the Finance Committee. Paul, do you want to speak to Article 11?
Article 11 is the town share of the purchase of the carts that we gave to every residential household, roughly. We got a grant for roughly three-quarters of the cost of those. What the original plan was, is that we were going to finance the other, or the town share, basically the 25% of that was going to be funded with savings that were going to be generated from less waste disposal in tonnage. We have looked at, I've looked at, and I've, you know, I gave the information to the Finance Committee, that those savings in tonnage, or the reduction in tonnage, have not materialized. Therefore, because those savings have not materialized, the town still needs to pay its 25%. And we're going back to the reserves that are within the enterprise fund, asking for an appropriation to cover the town's 25% share of those carts.
Okay. Mark Gold, do you have any questions for Paul on Article 11?
No, I don't. I guess other than the fact that we said we were going to try to recoup that money from savings, are we at least going to try to track that a little bit, Paul, to see if that actually happens?
Well, again, I've been, within the monthly reports, Mario gives us the tonnage on a monthly basis that is going to the landfill. And I can get some of it, but we, again, we're just not going to materialize that $41,000. So potentially, we could reduce this. I can try to track where we are, but, you know, we're also then looking at the crystal ball to see what's going to happen from today's date going off to June 30th.
Right. Maybe I can just ask if you could just send, write yourself a note that maybe on June 30th or something, to send us a note and let us know how we did relative to that reduction.
Yeah, and we can also look at it as we approach town meeting date. We can look at it to see if anything has changed drastically that we can, have to amend this number downward would be technically the only way it would go.
Right, thanks.
Richard, any questions for Paul?
I don't have any questions, just a statement. I think it's a shame that this proposal was sold at town meeting to be self-fulfilling and it's turned out now it's going to cost us $41,000 additional dollars. I think it's kind of a, it's a poor testimony to a program that was supposedly well thought out.
Tom, any questions or comments for Paul?
Well, I just, it's nice to be right once in a while. And when this issue came up, I said I didn't think that people were playing around with their trash, you know, and that some of those barrels may have been large, but I don't think there was much stuff in them. And so it's nice to see I was, you know, on the market, although the market and research showed that there was more trash. And, you know, I don't know, whoever did that research, we should get our money back from them, and we could use that to pay for the trash barrels. But my understanding, Paul, is that when you apply for a grant, that then, you know, you can't get out of paying this, this has to be paid, right?
Well, it has to be paid. The town has actually paid the bill for the, you know, for the barrels already.
Yeah, so, I mean, no, we have to put this before the town. I mean, and if they voted it down, you still have to pay it, so. I mean, otherwise, they'd want all the money back from the grant, right?
They'd probably want either the barrels back or the grant money.
Yeah.
I hate to say they want their barrels back, because somebody might say they can have them, but...
It says Longmount on them. Mark Strange, any comments or questions?
No questions. No questions or comments?
All right, is there a motion to approve Article 11?
So moved.
That was Mark Gold. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Mark Strange. Roll call?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Richard? Richard?
You're on mute, Richard.
Richard?
No, he says no.
No.
Did you call everybody?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so let's go on to the yellows, and then we'll pull out what was, let's see, I don't think, oh, 20, it doesn't have a color next to it.
20, 20, 20, 20.
20 was probably green, right? So let's...
20 is yellow, with my...
Oh, is yellow? Okay. I forgot to write down what it was. I don't think there were any other greens.
13, 16, 20, and 8.
Okay.
13, those are all marked yellow with further discussion that either Mark Gold had a question on a few of them. Mario may have responded that we need to move forward on them. When asked certain public officials if we need to move forward on some of those, the responses were yes, we need to move forward and now as opposed to later.
Okay, so let's vote all the yellows unless they're circled. And the non-circled yellows that we're pulling out are Article 17, Article 18, Article 19, Article 27, Article 28, Article 29, Article 30, Article 32, Article 33. Actually, I pulled some of these out. Let me get my email, because I was worried to go into the bylaw changes. All right, so Article 33 and Article 34. Is there a motion to approve those articles?
I'll make that motion.
That was Mark Gold. Is there a second?
Did you get all of them?
Is there a second? Mark Strange. Okay, Mark Gold, do you have any questions or comments on those?
Not really. I guess my, I guess my big question, Marie, was about the CPA, I mean, you know, warrant articles. From my understanding, is, you don't have a whole lot of choice about those. I'm not quite sure why they were even in there as yellow. The others are some of the zoning ones, and I'll defer to Walter Gunn and the planning commission on those. So for the most part, I don't really understand why we were questioning these at all.
Okay, well, he was just looking on what was absolute essential business and what could be, if we had to do an essential town meeting and only do what we needed to do to keep the wheels turning?
Right.
And that's why he didn't, he put those as yellow, because they were second level.
I put those as yellow. And also, I did confer with Stephen Weiss on the CPC ones, if there's any questions on those. And, you know, the response that I got back were, they wanted to move forward with 24, 25, and 26, but 27, 28, 29, and 30 can all be done at a subsequent town meeting. They do not have to necessarily be done at this town meeting. Again, that was done in conjunction with Stephen Weiss, who said that he actually took a poll vote to some degree of his committee members.
All right. Richard, do you have any questions on these articles or comments?
Yeah, I think the questions are far too many for tonight, Marie. I'm not going to support them, but it's not so much I don't support, it's just that there's too many unknowns at this point.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I think the questions do look pretty straightforward. The only one I had a question, I know it came up in the Finance Committee, too, Article 29, you know, $4,800 to remove, not leave in an area. I wonder if you could, if they could do it mechanically, you know, maybe that's something we could get to talk about, like use a bulldozer, just like plant, native plants after that. But other than that, that looks pretty straightforward.
Okay, Mark Strange?
No questions or comments?
Okay, could we have a roll call vote, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Richard?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Now, let's go back to the individual ones. I pulled Article 8 out of the Yelp, because the Finance Committee was asking this question, and I'm not sure if you had the answer. 8 is about the producing a preliminary survey and design work for the reconstruction of Longmount Street Route 5. Did you find out what section that was going to be?
Well, it's not actually a section. I did speak with Mario in his capital report on this, he did have it itemized. This is more of a longer-term project. It's technically a $400,000 project. This is year two of a funding request. Next year, it will be back potentially for the final $200,000. The project itself runs from the infield line all the way to Converse Street on Long Meadow, so there's no real, it stops at, you know, Bliss or anywhere like that. It's just a phase of the whole project. And I did send that information along with the capital request that Mario had prepared to the Finance Committee in that regard. But at the same time, Mario also said it could wait until potentially the fall.
Mark Gold, do you have any questions or comments on Article 8?
No.
Richard?
Yeah. Mark...
Yeah, Marie, I guess it's a little sarcastic here. I guess it looks like it's far more important for our community to put new trash cans at the curbside and pay additional $41,000 than to approve that crucial infrastructure design money to move our federal highways or our highway program forward. So there's nothing I can do about it. It just looks like that's the way our community thinks.
Tom?
Yeah, I look at this and I think that it is a good plan because, you know, with the money we're going to be getting from the casino, eventually we'll be doing the intersection where Route 5 runs into Springfield. And it would be nice if we had the rest of the Long Meadow Street ready to go. As you know, there's several sections of that Long Meadow Street that doesn't have sidewalks. And considering it's our main street, I think it would be a good get started and get funded.
Mark Strange?
Yeah, I agree. This is a, this is a good project and a well worth the expenditure, but I would obviously defer to Mario. If we can get it on the fall town meeting warrant to get it approved, that's, that's fine by me, but I would advocate moving forward with the kind of preliminary stuff with respect to the Long Meadow Street reconstruction.
Is there a motion to approve Article 8?
I would take a motion to approve it. Okay.
Okay. Mark Strange approved it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And Tom seconded. Roll call?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Richard?
Can I get clarification? Are we talking about dropping the article?
Oh, no, approving it. We just, we put a motion to approve it.
Okay. Then I vote yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we'll go on to Article 13. Article 13 is, you want to...
Budget.
The budget. And Mark Gold, did you have questions or comments in regards to Article 13?
Yeah, I did, obviously. I sent them something to you about that. I remain concerned about the funding of the, you know, the public safety, maybe it's the ambulance that's capital, but maybe it's the staffing. I'm also concerned about the funding of the extra people in the DPW. You know, we're authorizing the hiring of people to take care of Wolf Swamp Fields, and those fields won't be taking, won't be ready to be taken care of till a year from now. And I just think to put that in the budget is not my preference.
Richard Foster, do you have a question or comment about Article 13?
I don't. I guess basically my comment's the same as what Mark just said, Marie. I mean, we have talked on our board relentlessly about reducing our personnel overload, and we look like this year we're increasing in a couple departments FTEs. I find it hard to support that energy looking at the budget outlook that we're facing.
Tom?
Yeah, I guess where I'd like to start with is, you know, on March 2nd, we got a town manager budget message from Lyn and Paul. And I don't know if the two of you have that in front of you, but on page three, there's a diagram or a table that shows the 2020 and the 21 estimated. And then there's a paragraph, two paragraphs below that. It's, it talks about the increase over the 2019 budget. And it gives a figure there that says after fiscal year 2021, the tax rate would be 2498. And I just, that jumped out to me like, where did this come from? And so I don't know if someone can explain that to me.
Paul?
Yeah, no, I understand. It actually comes from information that's, that's on page three, that there is a line in that chart above that we have an estimated tax levy of $56 million, 56,319, 574. I don't know if you see that number, Tom. It's in the, it's in the second column under the 22,000.
Okay, up on the, in the table, yeah.
Right. So if you take that number, and that number then correlates to the budget number, where you have a budget that meets the select board's goal of only utilizing 1.875% of the tax levy, and it leaves about $300,000 on the table. But if you take that 56 million, 319, 574, and you divide that into the estimated 2021 valuation in that paragraph there where the 2498 is, of 2,254, 944, 667?
Yeah.
That division is going to leave you a tax rate of $24.98.
Yeah. And our maximum is, is $25.
Well, the 2498 includes excludable debt of well over $2. So it's really a figure closer or a little bit less than $23 that is applicable to the $25 limit. And again, I don't have the, I don't have the calculation in front of me, but you'd have to take that 56 million, 319 and subtract, there's a number above it that says net debt exclusion of 5,377, 351.
Yep.
You'd have to subtract that number out, which would be roughly $51 million, or actually the, well, you used it, yeah, $51 million, and then divide that into the 2,254, 944, 677.
Okay. All right, that...
I mean, I can probably do it on my calculator.
That's comforting. That's comforting.
Yeah, I guess.
It's closer to 23 instead of 24. I will, I'll be right on that math problem just after we get out, done with the meeting.
Okay. If you send me the answer, I'll correct it for you if you're wrong.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Mark Strange, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
I think I'd like to make one comment on this, you know, understanding Mark's concern about the, about the DPW and, you know, potentially not, especially the custodian, where the custodian is meant for the, for the new Council on Aging Building, and that may not open up until late fall, early winter. And the fact that we just voted a additional amount of the retainer for, for Town Council. I'd be wondering if the board would be looking, or would entertain some, some minor adjustments in order to account for that retainer. And my suggestion would be to lower the trash pickup fee, the curbside pickup fee in the Recycling Enterprise Fund, excuse me, by $10,000. We're out to bid on that. And I think the number that is currently in the budget is the highest amount that we had previously. To reduce the custodian, the additional custodian roughly by $13,000.
And what line would that be?
Wouldn't you say what line? On the budget document?
Yeah.
Let me open up the budget document.
Would that be general government?
It would be a general government line under Town Buildings Custodian.
So it'd be another $13,000 under general government decrease?
Right. And then finally...
Paul, excuse me, Paul, is that the one that, that was projected as a $35,000 area?
Yes, yes.
35, 562, 3?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay.
And then, and then an additional reduction to the DPW laborer of the difference of $9,000. And that would total $32,000, and that $32,000 would then be added to the retainer for council.
Well, that would go back into general government.
It would go back in, into general government. So we're kind of moving around a few line items, and there's a $10,000 shift from the bottom line of the Enterprise Fund, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, back up to the General Fund. But those lines would be adjusted in order to accommodate the retainer for Town Council.
Okay. Yeah, and in regards to field maintenance, I think that's part of the, the big complaint that I've been hearing my nine years on the board, that, forget Wolf Swamp Fields, our fields are horribly maintained, our, our green areas, even in front of, we have volunteers that have been working really hard to try to do the planting, but we really need to have visual standards that we don't have. So we did cut some of our FTEs when it came to the dispatchers.
Right.
And I, and I think that this is exactly where we need to have been placing it for years, so I'm supporting the increased manpower in regards to that part of DPW. And the ambulance, I think the chief explained his, so I'm supporting those increases, though I've been screaming, "Cut your FTEs" for five years. Stephen kept saying, "Stop saying that." So, but it is something we need to do, but these were two changes that I saw you made, and I support those two changes.
The FTEs will actually drop by a half on the non-school budget.
Okay.
But that half also means it's dropped by one benefited employee. So it's one full benefited employee because we're adding, there's a part-time person that will not be benefited. So, you know, that, that's, there is some, some small savings in that regard on the, on the non-school side.
All right. So this is the budget. I'm going to go through everyone one more time. Mark Gold, any other questions or comments on the budget that has now been amended by Paul?
Yeah, I, I still, I mean, I was going to say, I'd like to take more than the $9,000 out of DPW labor force. You're right, you're the one who's leading the charge on no more FTEs. Grounds maintenance is perfect for outsourcing. And, you know, we tried the rental of the fleet for one winter, and we turned out it didn't work, it wasn't cost effective. But unless somebody tells me, you know, we've tried this and, and, you know, I can't support a budget that's bringing in more people to cut lawns when that is so available for outsourcing. I mean, you know, if you want to pass the budget...
Actually, Mario, Mario did come in here, and he did say he tried to outsource some of this, and it was coming in so expensive, but he's still outsourcing one more area. Forget one area he tried to, he says he's going to continue to try to outsource, but he, he said it's, the numbers that are coming back are outrageous. So he did say he tried it, and it didn't, didn't work out.
Yeah, I, I heard that. I was, I was watching that, that last Monday, I guess. But the, the issue for me is, you know, we're not comparing apples and apples. We're not comparing OPEPs, and we're not comparing pension plans. You were comparing, you know, $40, $46,000 in his budget for two people versus outsourcing, which might be $50,000 or $55,000. But when you take that $46,000, you enroll in all the, all the benefits and the long-term growth of it, I, I just think it's, it's a lot. And I'll just, my comment is, I don't want to vote against the whole budget because of that $46,000, but I will. I'd much rather vote the budget without that line item and then let me vote against that line item because I think that that's, I, I just don't think that's the right thing for us to do.
Okay. Richard? Richard? Okay, I'll come back to you. Tom, any questions or comments on the amended budget?
No, I, I think those are great amendments. I think, Paul, I appreciate your, you know, your thought process and looking for ways to make it more palatable. But it was really convincing to me when the Finance Committee said that they don't see any problem with this budget, you know, that they think that, you know, there's a good effort put into, you know, getting things low enough that it's, it kind of keeps us away from the edge of the cliff. And, you know, so I, I'm going to support it.
Mark Strange?
Yeah, just, just one quick comment to Mark's, Mark Gold's position, that is, I started out exactly where, where Mark is right now, and I think I asked Mario the question about outsourcing the field, the maintenance for the, the fields, Wolf Swamp and, and others. And, you know, his, and when we asked Paul, I think the, the comment was, you know, whatever the salary is, take on the number 20,000 for retirement and, and insurance. Obviously, OPEB is separate from that, but, you know, Mario's position was that outsourcing maintenance for Wolf Swamp would be, would exceed, you know, $60, $65,000, whatever we would pay for, for an additional employee. And, you know, I have to trust Mario, Mario's opinion on that. And I do think we should, we need to look at every possibility that we have to outsource and minimize our OPEB and insurance and retirement exposure, you know, but we got to be reasonable about it. And if the opinion of the department head is that it's more cost effective to hire, hire an employee rather than outsource it, I got to trust his opinion on that.
Richard Foster?
I have no comments, Marie.
Okay. All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve Article 13 with the three amendments that Paul recommended, which was a $13,000 decrease. What, is that the...
$13,000 decrease in the Town Building custodial line item, a $9,000 decrease in the, the laborer and grounds, and a $10,000 decrease in the Recycling Enterprise Fund, the curbside trash pickup. Again, that's out to bid at this point in time.
Is there a motion?
Wait a second. He has a $32,000 increase in general government.
Correct. I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. I'll move the motion.
Tom Lakusha moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And second was Mark Strange. Roll call?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to Articles...
Marie, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I think, I think a budget overall that passes three to two on town floor looks lousy.
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to potentially open it up to more discussion than we want.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, again, I, I think that that's an issue. And if nobody else is concerned about it, I'm fine because I'm on the two sides. But what I suggested was, we put together a package that could pass 4O or 5O, and then a couple other sections that may pass by lower margins. If anybody, if nobody else thinks that that's important, that's fine. I just wanted to make the comment.
Okay. All right. All right, let's move on to Article 16. Article 16 is the capital, let's see, for capital projects. And this is where there was some disagreement between this, the town manager and the capital plan. Capital planning came in with three new projects. One was the asbestos, and the other was the, the glass for the display cabinets in the schools. And both of those amounts were under the $25,000 requirement, so the town manager did not recommend them to us. And the glass, she said, was probably going to be taken care of through the school budget, the glass replacement. And the asbestos for 15, was there a way you were going to handle that, Lynn?
Similar. We were looking at both of those as being taken care of with, with possible money left over as we got closer to the close of FY '20.
The other two areas that were in disagreement, one was the $41,000 Greenwood exterior door replacement, final phase. Capital planning did not approve that, and Lynn, you felt that that was a priority. Do you want to explain your feelings on that?
Sure, yeah. It's, it's, regardless of the reuse of the building, it's going, it's a town asset. Replacing the doors didn't seem to be frivolous to me. Felt like it was good management of a building.
And capital planning felt that there was no long-term plan for the building yet to be placing $41,000 in it. The other one is the kitchen, fire department kitchen updates. The, you put that in here, but that wasn't on your original plan.
I did... I did, let me just, I'm pulling that up right now. It, it was in there. I was looking at it in a wrong, in the wrong area. So, that was my mistake. But yes, it was in there.
Dr. Metz is available by phone. Does anyone want me to call Dr. Metz with any questions in regards to the, the capital? Or were you able to all watch the, the discussion at previous meetings?
I mean, did you just know, the Capital Planning Committee also approved the, just looking at their list, I thought they had approved the kitchen, yeah, fire department kitchen. They also approved the fire department kitchen.
Yeah, they approved that, yeah. So, any questions for Dr. Metz?
Can I ask a question of, of the town manager?
Sure. Mark?
Yeah, Ms. Mark Gold, a question about the Greenwood doors. Is it every door in the building, or is it just some of them? And, and more importantly is, you know, what's the status of potential reuse by a third party? Obviously, it's, you know, we've talked about the, the Westcom potentially thinking about doing it, whereas they come in and update those things anyway.
This is a replacement of 10 poorly fitting original metal doors. I mean, certainly the reuse of the building is under consideration. No, there's nothing that's gone forward, you know, anymore that I have a proposal to provide you with. I know Westcom did come in and look through the facility. It, it's something they're considering, but I, I'm getting the sense that it's going to be too small for them.
Okay. So, in other words, and when you say ill-fitting, that means we're losing energy, it's all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, they're difficult to operate, and they don't close tightly.
They're only 35 for 40 or 50 years old, Lynn. I don't understand the problem.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mark, do you, Mark Gold, do you have any other questions or concerns, or do you want me to call Dr. Metz for you?
Nope, I'm all set.
Richard? Any?
Yeah, Marie, I, I had several problems with the plan, but I don't know if it's the time. You know, I, I look at $52,000 for the replacement of a car number two for the fire department. I don't know how that fits into our priorities. I, I coast on down, and I know that we actively have SOIs out right now to consolidate schools, Glennbrook and Williams. I look, and we're spending $45,000 on a Williams energy management system. We're spending $42,000 on Glennbrook energy management system. And as I coast on down, I see we have $50,000 for Glennbrook irrigation system. I realize that that is tied in with the Wolf Swamp field issue, but, you know, my feelings on that project, it was ill-conceived when it started. It wasn't appropriately priced out and presented at town meeting. And now we're throwing another $50,000 on top of that project, because we say that we would like to irrigate the grass for a one- to two-year program until the fields are totally finished. As I look down, down across those, I see those glaring things that makes me question, what is the community's long-range goals? I don't know how you can have SOIs in for replacements of buildings and still want to put this kind of money into non-critical infrastructure improvements.
Lynn?
I mean, I don't completely disagree with you. I raised some of those questions earlier on in this process. And the timeline for the SOIs puts us out seven years before anyone could even enter that building, or that knew, a middle school. So, certainly the energy management system, the, the response was that that would pay for itself over that timeline. And the irrigation, just helping the state of the fields so that they're more usable, more playable. I mean, I completely understand your concerns. But there is, I mean, the, the backup information and the, speaking with the department heads on it, and attending the capital planning committee, left me feeling like these were, these were good projects to move forward. And I just should add, the SOI, that's a seven-year projection if we get in the project funding. Like, if we get in the queue as put forward by MSBA. So, that's, that's also a big unknown.
Tom, do you have any questions for Lynn? Or Dr. Metz?
No, no, I, I think you did a good job of explaining some of those costs. You know, I know that we have hundreds of students going to Williams and Blueberry School ordinarily, maybe not today, but, and we have to keep things going, you know, Glennbrook and Williams, just like any other school building. And, you know, it's, it's not something I'd like to spend money on, but I don't think we really have much choice. So, but thank you.
Mark Strange, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a quick, quick comment. So, yeah, I, I agree with, with what Richard said and, and what Lynn echoed. It's, it's a frustrating situation with the middle schools, because they do have so many immediate needs to, just to, to, to make it, make it habitable for the, for the kids. If you look at, you know, if our timeline for, for our new school was a couple of years, you know, things might be different. But we're talking at least seven years out, and some of these improvements, not only this year, but coming down the pike, you know, unfortunately, they need to get made. And I, you know, I hate wasting money, but, and this, this wouldn't be a waste, because if you've been in the schools, you understand how, the, the needs that both schools have. With respect to the energy management systems, we, we've done this in Agwab, and there's, there's a relatively quick ROI in energy management systems. So, I think, you know, that's, regardless of what happens down the road with the schools, whether we consolidate it or not, those are, I think those are good investments. And just, just another quick comment is, as we're, as we're looking at potentially replacing roofs in towns, kind of a, an aside, but wondering if we can take a look at potentially putting solar panels on any new roof. I know we can, we can enter in the PPAs with certain third-party providers that would essentially put a new roof on for us at no extra cost. And I only say that because I know that the roofs at Glennbrook and, and Williams are going to be coming up before us in the next couple of years. Thanks.
Thanks. I had two questions. One is, I know you put in the $41,000 that the, they pulled out, that capital didn't. But you also, I forgot to mention, you increased the shoring system, and you also, so if you added the $12,541,000, where did you, how did you balance from what their numbers were? Was there something else you cut, other than the $30,000 between the glass doors and?
My, my plan was like 1.96.
Mm-hmm.
Theirs was?
1924.
Okay. So, you, and where'd you get the extra money from?
No, that, that, that amount, I had told the Capital Planning Committee they had about $2 million.
Oh, okay.
But when the actual calculation was made to take the 3.125%, it came out to $1,954, $954,770. So, that's almost where Lynn's number came up with. I think it's, in total, it's, it's like $1,960. And we're making up the difference from the capital stabilization fund. But the long and short of it is, capital planning committee still had some extra money to approve.
Okay.
That they left on the table, and Lynn basically took it, used all that was available.
And then I was concerned about two issues. One was the high school fire door replacement. We just put up that new high school, and we're having to spend $47,000 for new fire doors?
Yes. This was discussed at the meeting last week, I think it came up. There are, I'm just trying to refresh my memory. There are doors, actually, they're right, right out here in this hallway here, that the framing is failing, and they're, they're difficult to open or close, and it's, can create an issue during a situation where they need them to be closed, like a lockdown.
And it's too late to go back to the builder and say you did a lousy job?
That is my understanding, yes.
All right. Then also, $50,000 for the fire department kitchen update? Kitchen, I mean, even if you bought all new appliances, $50,000?
Yes, it's a 24/7 facility. I'm, I'm, I understand that the cabinets that were put in there were residential, and they've well outlived their use. Most residential kitchens aren't 24/7. And so, these would be to upgrade to more of a commercial industrial type so that they could withstand that heavier use.
And you think $50,000 is a reasonable amount for that?
Yes, they would have submitted backup material to support that. I'm just looking for it here.
And there was no cuts to pavement, guardrail, or sidewalk from last year, were there?
No.
Okay. Anyone, Mark Gold, do you have any more questions?
No.
Richard?
Yes, not being able to raise your hand, it's very hard to get attention at these meetings.
[laughing]
Actually, overall, Marie, when I look at the capital program, I, I look for continuity. I look for projects that have been on here for two or three years.
Yeah.
And are progressively moving forward in importance. What bothers me the most is that I've seen projects on here, such as I've mentioned, that all of a sudden have jumped on here and we're acting like they're high priority. I understand the importance of every one of these projects, that we're getting ready to replace our schools, and we've got SOIs in. I question the importance of energy management systems in a total scope of possible repairs to be done at those schools to make them better for our children. I, I just fail to see any type of information being presented to the board, or any justification being presented that, that, to justify some of these jump-up, what I call jump-up type expenditures. And I'm going to leave it at that. I, we don't want to delay it anymore. But, you know, I, for instance, I, I've been on the board for nine years, and I have never heard of anybody talking about the Turner Park Dam, and all of a sudden it's on here for $117,000. I just wonder why.
I can't speak to what happened before November, but what strikes me is there may have been a inspection in the last fiscal year that rose it to the level of needing to, to have some smaller remediation done before it gets to be a much larger project. That then turns it into a high hazard possibly, which comes with a much larger price tag. But again, I can't speak to what was done last year, and why it wasn't on here.
Okay. Is there any, has there been any sort of analysis done on breaching the dam, which would normally be a management consideration before these expenditures were taken for? You know, what is the value of that dam?
Well, the repairing it is much less costly than removing it. So, I think that is, that was the primary motivator to do some of this work, too, is that if we don't, we're going to just continue to escalate the cost to repair it. And no one, I don't think, is analyzing removing it, because that, that is multiple, multiple dollar signs there to do that.
Okay. Can I ask, can I ask one question? That, and I do have some background in dam management. Do we have any studies that support what we're saying of these? Where's our studies coming from? Where's the backup?
Yeah. Ty &amp; Bond did a study of the Turner Park Dam, May 8th of 2019, and that is included in the capital plan submission.
Has this been studied by any of the state agencies, or is this just Ty &amp; Bond?
Well, the Office of Dam Safety would do an inspection. I don't, I don't know what the schedule is that this is on, but they, they do evaluate the dams.
Richard, I remember Turner Park Dam coming up. When you were looking at Turner Park, you said we have to look at the, years ago, remember? And you said we have to look at, assessing what's there. And I remember being told that the Turner Park Dam was in such bad shape that there was a failure almost of being able to get to the other part of the park, because it was, you know, it was collapsing, and it was going to be extremely expensive. That's why when I see 117, I'm actually surprised it's not higher. Is that, that's not, that's just going to be shoring it up. You're not fixing it for 117, are you?
It's removing all the woody vegetation brush and growth upstream and downstream.
Yeah. By the way, removal of woody vegetation upstream and downstream is routine maintenance, Marie.
Okay.
It should be, it should be done every year. That's part of having a dam in your community, that you have a proactive maintenance program that takes care of these tasks. I mean, I, and I'm going to let this issue go the wayside, but I have no idea what the acre feet of this thing is. We don't have any statistical information to say what the hazard is for our community. It's, it's just one of the many issues that I'm seeing. And by the way, this is no, no infraction whatsoever or, or due back on our town manager. This is just something that's been going on in our community for many years.
Yeah. When you, you actually had an article on town meeting to try to get that, the whole infrastructure that POC looked at. And unfortunately, we never got the money to be able to look and see what was going on back there.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah. Tom, did you have a question, further questions or comments?
Nothing useful to say. I just, on our town symbol, we have a beaver and a looser. And if we put a couple beavers in that dam, they would fix it all up, and, and we'd have something to look at. They would clean up the brush quite a bit, too, but.
But they might put it in the wrong place, too.
They put it where they thought it was the best place to put it, yeah, no joke. But no, I, I appreciate all the hard work of, of the folks who prepared this information and, and looked over each of these projects to make sure that they felt that it was really worth us considering on Article 16. That's about it.
Mark Strange? Any other further comments?
No, nothing.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing further.
I, I think I agree with Richard in that we see things pop up we've never seen before, like the fire department kitchen, the second truck, all of these things that are popping up we've never seen before, which is very frustrating to us.
Yeah.
And then there's things that don't get put on, that, like the bathrooms of the library, the stalls of the women are just like from the 1910s. It's outrageous. So, it's, I think we've always asked here on the Select Board to have some sort of complete evaluation of, of our assets, and then have a program that is just not the squeaky wheel that gets the infrastructure, but where it really, really needs to be. So, you, you came in this mid-cycle.
Yes.
And I know you've been trying to do catch-up, and everyone's working really hard to try to get the process moving. But I think that's been a long-term concern on the Select Board is, you know, it's wish lists often than a program, pro, how do you say it, Richard? Programmatic?
Programmatic. Marie, may I make one quick comment?
Sure.
Thank you much for mentioning storage library, ladies restroom. I forgot that issue.
It's been shown to me for three years in a row. Whenever you go to the volunteer, and I'm taken in there. Mario hasn't been in, to the women's bathrooms. Yes, anything else? I'm looking for a motion to approve Article 16.
So moved.
That was Tom Lakusha. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark Strange, second. Roll call, vote?
Marie?
Yes?
Tabakisa?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Is that everybody? Okay. All right. Now, we'll go down to Article 20. Mark asked for this to be pulled out. This is transfer ambulance fund amount of $290,000 to equip and purchase a new ambulance. Lynn, do you want to speak to this?
Um, sure. Sorry, I was, let me get to where I need to be.
Okay. Well, I think this is talking about equipping the third ambulance, and that's where, so we have two on the road.
Right.
He used the old one to stay in. What I understood from the task force today, they're using the old third ambulance as a, it's dedicated to COVID-19 calls.
It is, yes.
But this is talking about buying a new third ambulance. So you want to talk to?
This is, well, this is to buy, this would be to retire that third ambulance that they are using more and more frequently, including right now. It's completely outfitted for servicing calls that are suspected to possibly be COVID-19 so that it can be an isolated unit when it comes back from dropping a patient off. It's not taking one of the regular ambulances out of service. So this would be to retire that 2005 ambulance and then replace, buy a new ambulance and rotate one of the older ones out to being that third standby ambulance. There's a grant that we would apply for that would fully fund the outfitting of the components of the ambulance.
I think on the chief's capital request, it's about a year ahead of schedule of what he had submitted a while ago for a capital request. But again, a lot of that is in order to take advantage of that grant opportunity to have that in place so that it be equipped and the actual price can be reduced if that grant is secured from the federal government.
Okay, Mark Gold, do you have a question for Paul or Lynn?
I don't have a question for Paul or Lynn. And Chief Dearborn was very, very clear on what this was. I think for me and I hope for the other people on the select board, the question is, you know, are we a town that needs three ambulances and the staff for three ambulances? Which is in, you know, up from zero to one to two to now three. That's the question. You know, can we afford three ambulances? Can we afford to have three ambulances? Can we afford to staff three ambulances? And at what point do you say that, you know, we're going to run a town with a certain number of ambulances and accept the fact that over that, for emergency purposes, you know, we will use private ambulance services? Because we just as a town can't provide the equipment to be at the 99.999% response level of everybody with an ambulance from the town. And for my purposes, we don't meet that criteria. I think we're a two ambulance town. I haven't seen any statistics other than the chief saying we need it that says, here's the number of times we've used the 30. There's the number of calls we've had for one ambulance, for the two were out, the number of times three were out. You know, and how many of those were in support of East Long Meadow? Because I heard we support East Long Meadow. You know, while there's not yet quite at the level of support we are in making transfers, I don't have enough data to say that we're a three ambulance town. So I don't have any questions, but I'm going to vote against it because I haven't got sufficient data other than we use three ambulances. I get it. But what percentage of town at time and are we a three ambulance town?
Any answers for Mark?
The only thing I say is, again, I don't have that breakdown of, you know, at certain percentages, there's one ambulance out, two or three. The only thing that I'm aware of is the chief, and he has it in his monthly reports, is that the number of service calls has been driven up over the last couple of years fairly consistently. But again, I can't give the breakdown of those types of calls that Mark is looking for.
Mark, I sort of asked a few of those same questions of the chief when he was here. And he said that they're not running the third ambulance out of town all the time. They say it's really being used by our local residents. And he's trying to do what he can to cut down the amount of times those ambulances go out because it's really exploding. And when I look at what our residents are looking for, I think the majority of residents are probably looking for shorter response times more than they are looking for feels or anything else. I think that's a priority to a lot of people in town. But I can understand your concerns. I asked him, what happens when they get the third ambulances and all of the other private agencies start pumping up? Because everyone's shorthanded now. And he said they'd be very happy that if they could start cutting back then some of their calls.
Right. I guess the question I should have asked a month ago was, there's 168 hours in the average week. How many of those hours is one ambulance out? How many of those hours is two ambulances out? And how many of those hours are three ambulances out? And we ought to be doing that week by week because that's data we've never seen. And the question again is, if the answer is very infrequently three ambulances are out, are we willing to pay for that level of service at that price?
Lynn, could you try to get that for him, even though it'll be past the vote? It can make a difference on town floor.
Yep.
Richard, do you have any questions or comments on Article 20?
I guess, actually, it's kind of along the line of what Mark Gold was saying, Marie. I've done some research too. I guess this is the problem being on the board as many years as we've had. We've seen us go from one to two and now proposing three. I don't think we've ever been given data, conclusive data before us to review that substantiates why we are so much above the national averages on ambulances. And I'm going to couch this by saying, I'm not sure that this is not justified except that we have not been given the support documents other than basically, believe me, this is what's happening. You know, when I look on the internet, it looks like the average tier two system across the United States, one ambulance serves a population of 47,000 people. Now, I can't tell you that that's legitimate. I can't tell you that that's real. But I can just tell you that that's what my research has shown. And I've looked for evidence to support the third ambulance. And although I understand it may be nice to have, and I agree at times it might be nice to have. But I also question why, when I look around at our other communities, they don't have ambulance services within all of the police departments as far as I can determine. Doing the research, apparently, police departments or, excuse me, fire departments take on ambulance services as a source of revenue. It appears to be that's the original conception, is the increased revenue ended to be a cost measure. I'm not sure where we're going in our future, except I see a department that seems to be exponentially expanding. And I don't understand the reason. I think offline, I talked with you and I said, well, DPW could start mowing grass in our community. And we could be making money on mowing grass. So it's not a revenue generation. It's a neat generation for our own community. So I have the same question to Mark. It's just not been shown to me that we have a definite need to serve our community with a third ambulance.
Okay. Tom, any questions or comments?
Well, you know, when you look at what Richard's saying, you know, if we lived in a town like Holyoke that has fires on a regular basis, I mean, ever since I've lived in this area, you know, you go up, there's a big fire. Where is it? Holyoke, you know? Our town does not have a lot of fires. And, you know, so ambulances are one way that we have our fire services on the firemen busy, you know, and busy doing good stuff. When we look at comparative services, and the chief has talked about this. He said, you know, you can get a paramedic on your ambulance or you can get an EMT. And when we look at private services and what they offer, it isn't up to the standard that Long Meadow deserves. And, you know, you look at a budget that we have of $72.5 million for 15,000 people. Some people pay a pretty big share of that because they have large homes. And I think people deserve the best quality from the fire department and ambulance services. The ambulance, for example, they just talked about Medic 2. And they said, you know, $8,300 a service. And you look at an ambulance that's getting 800 bucks an hour, that's $640,000 on that ambulance. And it's not out of service. But, you know, we look at a price of $290,000 and you think, $640,000? It's going to pay for itself in no time. And the other side is, we don't even know what grants are going to be available to help pay for the ambulance. And, you know, I guess the last thing is, although East Long Meadow is getting a new ambulance, you know, there's a new nursery home that's opening, Grand, the border of Long Meadow and East Long Meadow. And that's going to impact the need for ambulances, you know. And, you know, in 15, 20 years from now, the town probably won't need three ambulances. But unfortunately, we have to spend the money now because I think we do. And I think we owe it to the residents to have the best quality service for people who know our community and know our residents. So I would support this.
Mark Strange, did you have any comments or questions?
Nothing additional.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Article 20?
So moved.
That was Tom Lakusha moved it. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark Strange seconded. Roll call?
Marie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Mark Gold?
No.
Okay. Now, I hope I'm not getting too confused here. I'm going back to, now I'm ready for the reds.
Marie, how about Article 35, 39, 40, 41?
Yeah, those were very confusing. So we could go to 35. All right, so 35, I didn't quite understand, is this? Let's talk about 35 and all of the zoning bylaws and things like that. Are we going to be ready for those or do we want to do a special town meeting in the regular town meeting so we have more time to work on those?
When it comes to Article 34, I can't tell you if that one's, obviously it needs work.
No, 35.
But 35 is exactly how it was written by town council. It's something that went through last year, but there was no approval or preapproval by the Historic District Commission. My reach out to Tim Casey, who I believe is the chair of the Historic District Commission, and they were scheduled to meet in April. But at this point in time, he has a concern about meeting because of the limitations on, you know.
He's got all the information, you know, like trust me.
Well, do we go ahead and put it on and then remove it if they don't make their meeting again? How do you want to handle it?
He had no problem postponing it.
He, so we should go ahead and vote on this?
I think, I mean, I don't know what his concerns are if he can't meet remotely, if that's what he's thinking. But my understanding was this was something that had been brought up before and just missed one benchmark in order for it to be
Okay.
put through, but.
All right, is there a motion to approve Article 35?
I'll move we approve Article 35.
Is there a second?
A second.
Tom Lakusha seconded. It was Mark Gold. Any discussion on Article 35? Okay, roll call, vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yeah.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go back down to Walter Gunn's 39, 40, 41, 41.1, 41.2. How are we going to handle those?
I'll make a motion we approve Articles 39, 40, 41, 41.1 and 41.2.
Okay.
Second. Second.
All right, any discussion on those? All right, so that's 39, 40, 41, 41.1, 41.2.
Which will be renumbered, I assume, right?
Yes, yes, they will.
All right, roll call, vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard? Richard?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yeah.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, so this is petition 42. We just have to.
10 and 15 are left.
I'm sorry?
Article 10 and 15 are the two we haven't done anything with.
No, I'm asking about 42.
But they're by petition. They have to be.
We can't touch it.
We don't have to just, I thought we had to vote it on the warrant anyways. Okay, so 42 is taken care of. So let's go back down to Article, the Article 10, Article 15. Let's take those two before we talk about those last two. So Article 10 is, and Article 15 is their vote to approve Article 10 and 15. Article 10, they're both transfers into the stabilization fund.
Yes, second.
Who was the main motion?
Tom.
Tom moved, Richard seconded for. Is there a roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yeah.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Okay, now the last three, how are we going to?
Marie, I have one question.
Oh, sure.
Where is Debbie?
Debbie's right here. You can't hear?
She's not on, why have you got her off camera?
It was a special request.
Okay.
I won't say who. She's here.
Voice in the room and nobody can see.
I think that's intentional.
Okay.
Well, you're watching us on TV? Oh, no.
I'm tuned in 100%.
Oh, no, you've been watching the faces I've been making. I'm in trouble now.
We're all watching on a 30-second delay.
Oh, okay.
30-second delay, the good thing is you can't see the faces.
Oh, there's Deb.
They're, oh, they found you. The cameras moved around.
They're all waving to you.
Okay, so how do you want to handle 36, 37, 38?
37 will not go forward. We're not going to be ready for it.
Okay.
Camera.
How about 36?
36.
We started the charter amendments, that we put those together. Do you want to do a special town meeting?
I think in anything, we need more time to get those in order. There was a lot of discussion you guys had with David Martel. I don't think any conclusive votes were taken, so I think it has to go on.
So are we, so we're going to, special town meeting, that warrant has to be voted on in April?
It has to be voted on 14, at least 14 days prior to the, prior to the meeting date. So it would be your last, your third Monday, or actually, it's a holiday. I guess it's your, the third Tuesday potentially in April. Whatever that is would have to be taken care of.
So the last ones are going to be done in April in a special town meeting, and that's when Lynn's going to decide if she's going to move forward with the, any of the zoning ones
Right, there were three.
that we were looking at.
Yep.
So I know Debbie, we tried to move it fast, so it got a little jumbled. Do you think we got all the articles? Okay.
I think Mark Gold might have been tracking.
Oh, Mark Gold, were you keeping track of all the articles?
Yeah, I was. I think we got them all. I was crossing them off as we went through them.
Okay, because I was trying to do that, but then I got confused. Okay. And anything else we're supposed to be doing tonight, Paul?
No, I believe everything is taken care of as far as the warrant is concerned. I mean, we don't have a day for town meeting, but that's fine.
Okay.
That'll be addressed. We have a warrant that we can produce. We won't post it at this point in time. We'll move forward getting everything together and the other votes that I needed were taken care of. So I think we're all set.
Do we need to close the warrant or we're going to hold off until March 27?
I would close the warrant. If anything comes in now, it can be addressed in the special.
Okay.
So what about the budget? I missed that part then, I guess. Wasn't there a conversation about?
Yeah, they voted the budget.
Yeah, but we said we were going to wait on the 27th to see if there's any new crises before we settle. So we could close the warrant on the 27th, do you think?
I think you can close the warrant now.
We can amend it on the 27th if there's?
Then you would vote to reopen it maybe, but I don't want anything else further coming in.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
Let's get this settled, vote on it on the 27th. Any other petitions that come in can be handled on the special town meeting.
Okay, is that, I'm looking for a motion to close the warrant.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, Richard moved it and I assume Mark Gold, that was a second?
That was a close. That was a close second by Mark.
Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Marie, I just, are you sure we covered Article 25 on the roof of Stores Library?
Yeah, because that was a CPC article. Let me see, can you look and see if 25 was one of the Greens on our first vote?
Yeah, I have it going forward.
Yep.
It was. We did 24, 25, 26.
Okay.
22, 23, 24, 25, 26. Okay, all right then. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote on closing the warrant?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All right, now I'm looking for a motion to, to clo, end this.
I will give you a motion to adjourn and I'd like to make one notification. It seems to me when we have the meetings in that room, they get out earlier than remote participation.
I, I think, well, hold it. This was a heavy-duty agenda. We're just having too much fun here without you guys.
Marie, I just want to thank you for keeping track and controlling this. It's very tough to do by, with people calling in, so I give you a lot of credit for working your way through this. It worked pretty well.
Thank you.
And once, once again, Marie, kudos to the town manager and her staff and everybody that's involved in this effort to keep our community safe.
Yes, and thank you for participating, helping out.
Marie, I'd also, I'd like to say one other thing is that, you know, the meeting that you held was televised with the Finance Committee and Tampa, all those folks. That's a big help and I, and I know you're hoping that the same thing happens next year. It was really helpful to hear from the Finance Committee before we had this meeting and so I'd like to thank you for doing such a good job.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. Is there a second to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you and thank you for joining us. I know it was a little confusing since we were going through numbers, but we were trying to move this along quickly. And thank you, this is my last budget vote. Good night and we will have a meeting on the 27th, but that could be canceled if we don't feel the need for it. Thank you.
Thanks.